Welcome, everyone, to the May 13th Board Meeting and Study Session. I'm calling this meeting to order, and I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As far as roll call, all board members are present this evening, with one attending virtually. Our first item on the agenda is the open forum. And because we do have the maximum number of people speaking again, I am going to read the instructions and the guide for the open forum. In accordance with Policy 203, the Board sets aside up to 15 minutes to receive citizen input through an open forum. Input from students, staff, parents, and community members on major decisions can be a valuable form of assistance to the Board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the Board. The open forum is a safe space for pre-LSAS community members to share experiences, concerns, and feedback in accordance with their First Amendment rights. The forum is an opportunity for our community to elevate the conversation, create healthy spaces for dialogue, and demonstrate respect for opposing views so that we can all collectively do better. The open forum rules are as follows. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, the sign-up sheet is available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address the Board. Up to five speakers shall be provided, a maximum of three minutes or 15 minutes total, to address the Board unless an exception is granted by the Board. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual Board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to these rules or time constraints may be told his or her privilege of speaking has ended. If you have any handouts or materials for the Board, please submit those items in advance to Martha Walls, who's sitting back there behind the administration desk. Members of the public should not approach the dais. The Board will not review handouts during public comment period. Board members will listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community but will not engage individuals during their time. The Board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding any issue presented. Each forum speaker should indicate whether they would like a follow-up by the administration or the speaker, which is as forum available on the sheet. After open forum and when the Board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order. However, Board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the Board in its deliberations. Thank you in advance to the speakers and the audience for respectfully sharing, listening, and being engaged in our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools community. Okay, so first on the list, we have Rosalie Johnson.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Because this appears to be my last opportunity to speak on this matter, and the student surveys that we completed months ago were not spoken about until last week, another student made a survey which were all provided, which you were all provided. She asked me to come speak because she has heard negative things said about students who had spoke in the past. This survey had seven questions and 167 responses in two weeks. The students were seventh and eighth graders, asking if they were in a CPM class, who their teacher was, so they made sure they only got CPM students, on a scale of 1 to 10 if they liked CPM. Did they think CPM prepared them for the MCAs? If they felt CPM prepared them for next year? And finally, if they had any additional comments they would like to share? It is clear that the majority of our classmates do not enjoy CPM. The most common rating given by our classmates was a 1, with 108 out of 167 students choosing this option, representing 65% of responses, comments such as, quote, "I feel like I'm falling behind," end quote, end quote, "I feel like I'm wasting my time," end quote. Also, 38 students rated their enjoyment of CPM as a 2, making up 28% of responses. Comments like, quote, "It's a nightmare," end quote, quote, "I do not like it because I don't learn a lot from it," end quote, end quote, "I feel like I'm losing confidence in my math abilities because of it," end quote. These comments reflect the disappointment and lack of confidence that some students experience when engaging with CPM. On the other hand, a small percentage of students rated CPM with a higher score, such as a 5, 6, or 7. One student mentioned, quote, "It's okay," end quote, showing that there are some individuals who find value or a positive figure, feature, sorry, in the program. Overall, the data suggests that the majority of my classmates have a negative experience with CPM, thing that is unhelpful to their learning progress, comments such as, quote, "It's a terrible program," end quote, quote, "It's literally the worst thing ever, and we completely wasted our whole year," end quote, end quote, "It's ineffective," and, oh, end quote, reflects the overall feeling of dissatisfaction towards CPM. As you prepare to vote, I hope you remember that student voices matter. I hope you listen to us this time.
The next speaker is Charles Johnson, also on CPM.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As you prepare to vote for this curriculum this evening, I have feedback I'd like you to offer, that I'd like to offer. At the most recent finance meeting, where Director Bullion and Director Olstad were both at, I was lucky to be at as well. I was re-watching, and the question-and-answer portion wasn't there, but I took some notes. Some of the things that were left out in that I took notes on were notes on CPM. These notes were that Dr. Thomas said that we would have not only the cost of the upfront curriculum, the 370K upfront, but also the year-over-year costs. Additionally, during the town hall, one person asked how much these unfunded mandates are going to cost us, which is yet to be addressed. We also talked about the REED Act and how much that's going to cost us, and guess what? We haven't had an answer to that yet. We're in May, and you're getting ready to vote on this. I'd like to know how much it's going to cost, and how much it's going to cost year-over-year, both outright and, again, year-over-year. This is a question that needs to be answered, and as a taxpayer and as a community member, I think we deserve to know. Be explicit on where the funding for this curriculum is coming from. I believe your yes vote on this curriculum means you are authorizing 370K from our fund balance because we have a 1 million budget shortfall. The strategic plan isn't done, and we are certain that this isn't going to fit our strategic plan. If you're not sure when, if you're not sure, then what's the harm in waiting a few months until the strategic plan is voted on? The taxpayers vote for additional funding, and more data is released to make sure. In the end, I think it's best to take a pause and reflect on what you've heard, answer the questions, and evaluate all the financial situations that are coming to this district. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean Wheeler.
I'm Jean Wheeler, and I'm a member of this year's district's Teaching and Learning Committee. I'm reading this letter on behalf of a friend who wished to remain anonymous with concerns of backlash to her family for expressing this publicly. And the letter says, "Members of the school Board," and actually, I'm going to start with the very end because of time, it says, "If the Board insists on moving ahead with this curriculum, we are prepared to pull our student from this district. Our experience this year has been a struggle, to say the least. My child, an honor roll student, has been falling behind in math since starting at Twin Oaks Middle School. Yet, they have not been testing to, quote, 'grade level,' quote, on the MCAs yet. My child received an A in every quarter in sixth grade. Seventh-grade math had started out strong from a grading perspective. However, my child's experience had gone downhill throughout the year. This new curriculum with lengthy word problems that pack so many topics to unwrap has made my child shut down and have no interest in trying to learn pre-eligible concepts. Feedback from my child is that people in the assigned groups do not talk, the students are not teachers, and even if they understood how to solve the problem, they don't know how to explain it to their table mates. So my understanding is that very few kids in class are talking about math when it comes time to work in groups. Because my child has struggled with this curriculum all year, many nights I correct the homework before turning it in to see where my child is struggling. When I have viewed some of the work, which happens to be incorrect, and ask how the answer was arrived at, my child will say, quote, "I copied the answer from my group," quote. I am beyond frustrated with the lack of teaching that is happening in the classroom. The problems in the CPM workbook are poorly written and confuse parents trying to help their child. I have an example from a lesson below at the beginning of the year when my child was confused by this word problem. I was confused at the terminology and the fact that no one in any company or business I have ever worked for has spoken like this. And the problem's objective was, I can describe the results of removing negative values or adding a positive value. And the problem stated, Tanya remembered that in her sixth-grade class, her teacher never used the word "negative" and avoided negative phrases. Instead, he would say the opposite of blank. For example, instead of saying the comment was hurtful, he would say it was, quote, "the opposite of supportive," quote. This extended to mathematics. When he saw a negative 4 in a problem, he would say the opposite of 4. If he saw a negative negative 4, he would say the opposite of the opposite of 4. And the question in the word problem was, how would he say negative 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 4? And she continues, "That math is math. I expect my tax dollars that pay for a math teacher to teach my child math concepts, not watch a video and expect middle schoolers to figure out for themselves."
Wheeler, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Rachel Carlson.
I would like to ask the Board to postpone this vote on middle school math curriculum until there is more quantitative and proficiency data available at minimum, until the strategic plan is adopted. I want to make it clear that I do trust the teachers, which is why I send my children to school every single day. I do not, however, trust any experts without considering the possibility that they are making decisions based on incomplete or limited data, which is ultimately why I began speaking at these board meetings in the first place. If I had trusted the experts in January of 2019, I would have accepted that my child's principal knew what was best for him rather than seeking out alternatives for gifted testing, which led him to Sage Academy. If I had trusted the experts in 2021, I would have allowed my child's mental health to continue declining from distance learning. That four of you voted in favor of because you trusted the experts. Instead of two of our children attending a school that had, I'm sorry, instead, two of our children attend a school now that had allowed students to be in-person, unmasked, and they are both thriving academically and socially. I do trust experts, which is why I reached out to other school districts and teachers to gather a variety of perspectives on this curriculum. I even connected with a retired math teacher that has taught and done extensive research into CPM. The responses I received were overwhelmingly unsupportive of this curriculum. There are many stakeholders in our community that have an opinion on this topic, many of whom are not experts in teaching middle school math but are working in professions that required an extensive education in math. This should not discount their concerns. What the parents that have reached out asking for a pause on this adoption are, are experts in what is best for their children. According to NSBA, you are all elected by the people in your community to represent their values, views, and desires for public schools in their district. I ask you to consider what the majority of the community wants regarding this vote tonight. According to Policy 203, your duty is to support solutions that will provide the greatest benefit to the largest number of students without negatively impacting others. I'm also asking you to listen to the students. Are there more students thriving or struggling through this curriculum? One final thought, since we do not currently have the 370,000 to purchase this curriculum, what if we allow the math experts in our district to take what they like about the pilot and blend it with the current curriculum and develop a curriculum of our very own that can help all learners meet their full potential? By Minnesota Statute 120B.021, Minnesota academic standards do not require a specific curriculum. School districts determine how their students will meet the standards and benchmarks by developing courses and curriculum. Maybe what we can do is go back to the drawing board and give our teachers, that are obviously very, very passionate about their jobs and what they teach, and give them the freedom to take the best from what they know works and create something better than what money can buy. Thank you.
Next, we have Angie Toller to address comments from open forum at May 6.
My name is Angie Teller, and I am a seventh-grade math teacher at Hidden Oaks, currently piloting the CPM Inspiring Connections curriculum. I am here just to clarify a comment that was said last week at the May 6 board meeting about a conversation with a CPM-piloting math teacher. In talking with the other four people piloting, none of us had a conversation with the speaker, and I just want to reiterate that the five of us math teachers piloting at Sage Academy, Hidden Oaks, and Twin Oaks Middle Schools, along with our middle school math department, have a unified consensus in support of the CPM curriculum. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes open forum. We're moving on, and approval of the agenda. I need a motion and a second. By Director Bullion and Olstad. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. I didn't hear. Oh, roll call. I already said all board, oh, sorry, all board members are present for the first time in a long time, so this is very good. So thank you very much. As far as...
Roll call vote, I believe.
She's distant.
Oh, that's right, because we have someone remote. Thank you. I have the old agenda in front of me. So as far as the vote goes, we do need a roll call since we have someone remote. So let's start with Director Olstad.
Aye.
Director Crosby.
Aye.
Director Burnick.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director Velasquez.
Aye.
And Director Atkinson.
Can you just repeat the motion, please? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. It was muffled.
It was to approve the agenda?
Oh, aye. Thank you.
Okay, and aye, so that passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to the business items that we have, the first one is the vote on the middle school math curriculum approval. I need a motion for this, so if you need a first and a second? For Director Crosby?
Second.
Second by Director Olstad. Okay, so I'm going to hand this over to Director of Assessment and Improvement, Zumbusch?
I'll start.
Or just, you're going to start off? Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Franz, and members of the Board and community. Tonight, you know, last week, we did a presentation with the Board and talked about the impacts of the curriculum that we were seeing. And just a quick recap, we know that since 1718, we have been declining in our math scores as a district, not just us, but many throughout the state. And similar to what we are seeing, you know, with the REED Act, and likely we may see in upcoming legislative cycles, the state looking at a more comprehensive approach to math because it is a statewide challenge that we are facing. We have been looking at the standards ramping up as well in the state of Minnesota, and they will be launched shortly here with a new set of standards, which are becoming more rigorous as a way to ensure that our kids are getting everything that they need to be competitive once they walk across the stages in many districts throughout the state. We shared information that we gathered from our mid-year evaluation. We will be doing a comprehensive evaluation at the end of the math pilot as well to do a research-based approach as to what the student experience was, staff experience. I know teachers have had their own formatives along the way as well. And one of the pieces I just want to share is that a lot of the conversation that we are having around math, and I shared this example last week, is how do we build mathematicians who not only acquire solid math skills that will help them all the way throughout their life, but their lives, but also how we can help kids think critically and be really governed in that inquiry-based model of learning, to be asking a lot of questions. And that is something that's at the core of CPM, and I would say that it's at the core of many new curriculum that are coming across. As new publishers are coming forward, we know that learners need more than just memorization. They need life skills that are beyond just the facts. They'll know those facts, but they'll be able to apply those facts in a multitude of ways. And that is something that is not unique to CPM, it's not unique to math. And I would just say, there's probably not a teacher, you know, in our district or here this evening that doesn't understand the old adage of "I do, you do," or "I do, we do, you do." It's that whole gradual release model. And it's at the core of just good teacher pedagogy, and this is something that I think that we really want to make sure that, whether it's math, you know, English, language arts, social studies, it doesn't matter, the content, we want to make sure that we are building those critical inquiry-based learners in our classrooms. And so tonight, I'll be turning it over to Dan to walk through the numbers and the budget that we were discussing last week, or, yeah, last week, and then turn it back over to the Board for any final discussion that you might have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Edwards.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Chair Franz, members of the Board, want to give you, just before I dive into the numbers, just make one additional comment to go with Dr. Thomas's previous comments in our presentation from last week. A researcher that is very familiar to us in the field of education is Dr. John Hattie, and he has been doing research for many, many years, and he's had many editions of the Visible Learning text. And in that Visible Learning, he cites the most effective strategy to bring about increased, improved student achievement. And at the top of his list each and every year, after each and every time he has come out with this study, is collective teacher efficacy. And I want to speak briefly about collective teacher efficacy and what that means in this context around this particular recommendation that's coming to you tonight as a Board to consider. It speaks to the level of confidence that teachers have in their ability to guide students towards success, and not just their individual confidence, but their collective confidence. And I believe that at this point, this recommendation that's coming forward is based upon a deep level of collective teacher efficacy around what we are bringing forward tonight. And a deeper level than I've seen here in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools during my time here, which included 15 years as a principal at Twin Oaks Middle School, the level of commitment from our educators is paramount to its success, and we believe that we have that level of commitment, and we believe that we are going to see great success. Are we going to experience challenges along the way? And have we experienced challenges to date? Most definitely, we have, and we will continue. And as Dr. Thomas pointed out, at the end of the year, we'll continue to gather additional feedback from our students and parents who have been a part of this pilot to help inform how we will move forward, pending your approval, to best meet the needs of our students next year, and the year after, and the year after, and throughout our implementation, all aimed at bringing forward, as Dr. Thomas talked about, the increased student achievement that we know we all strive for, and specifically in this case, with regard to our math achievement. So I want to leave you with those additional comments, and then just share some information around the quote that you have in your packet, specifically a question that I have additional clarification around since our meeting last week, and that is that the costs associated with this adoption, this is a seven-year quote, that includes not only the upfront cost, but the ongoing cost during that seven-year. The student workbooks are included. Also included in the quote is the professional training that will be needed, both the initial training for our teachers, but also the ongoing training that will be in collaboration with our partners, assuming approval here at CPM, as well as our internal resources. Last week, when speaking about this, I spoke about the important role that our curriculum specialists will play, also our peer coaches will play in helping support our teachers and all other staff that are part of our learning and achievement and innovation team. So with that, with those additional bits of clarification, I am seeking your approval tonight on the recommendation.
Anybody else going to speak? Director, okay, so I'm going to open it up for board discussion, and why don't we go around the room, since I'm sure everybody has something to say? Director Atkinson, since you're online, and I want to make sure you can stay consistently there, why don't we start with you?
Sure, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to attend virtually this evening. I also appreciate the additional week to learn more and hear more feedback from our stakeholders on this important vote. As we've gone through this pilot, we, who would have ever thought there would be so much passion when voting on new math curriculum? As it's math, and math is very black and white. The answer is either right or wrong. Before we vote, I do have a couple of questions I received, that I received, and I'd appreciate clarification on from administration. The first one, and I have, I have five, but I'll try to, I'll see if I can condense some of these, just from a timing standpoint. One thing that just came to my attention is that there were students that were in advanced math classes piloting CPM, and then there were also students in regular math classes piloting CPM. Can you tell me, was there a different curriculum being used in this year's advanced math classes versus the regular math classes, all being pilot classes?
No, there was not. There was, we were utilizing the CPM Inspiring Connections curriculum, the same curriculum.
Okay, thank you. And then what is the date that we have to implement the new math standards?
So that officially has not been determined yet. They are 2022 standards, and the 2627 school year, I believe, is the first official year. I could be off by a year on that.
So when will we know more information about, I mean, it's, we seem quite rushed to approve this, but I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not clear. Could you provide more information for the Board?
So those standards are, we believe they're the standards that will be in place. There might be minor tweaks to those standards, but we are taking action or moving forward in this work, again, in response to a variety of factors, including that we are unsatisfied with our results, as Dr. Thomas had shared in his opening comments, the need to improve. And the investigation into our math curriculum at a K-12 level has been ongoing, and we are in our third year of that, and we are, we have obviously moved into implementation here at the K-5 level in year three, and are wanting to continue that path forward and continue that implementation, moving into the middle school level, so that we are fully prepared to be fully implemented when those standards become live, if you will.
So would it be possible to, thank you for that, would it be possible to continue the pilot into the fall, to, you know, just do a more comprehensive, deeper dive? Because next year, we'll have the advanced math students in with all the other students. So you may be able to get a clearer picture of data because all the So you may be able to get a clearer picture of data because all the students will be in one classroom together. Would it be possible to do that? I apologize for the clock spinning in the background. I'm so sorry.
I would say that anything would be possible if our recommendation is to continue our work forward at this time.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one quick question about the cost. My understanding is the students get three, three workbooks per year. I thought I heard you say two. Can you just clarify that? And then are the workbooks' costs included in the one-time charge that's listed on the register with the total charge of $373,000? Does that include three workbooks?
It includes all workbook costs. If I, if I said two, that was a mistake on my part. That is correct. It is three.
So there won't be any additional costs year after year after year for the workbooks?
That is correct. This is a seven-year upfront cost, including, as well as the professional development.
Okay. And then the last question, thank you for answering that. What is the district's plan to provide alternative instruction when parents request to exercise their right to opt out of this? And we've, we've heard plenty of reasons why they'd want to opt out, but what is the district's plan?
Director Atkinson, based upon the requests that may come up, that's a case-by-case basis. There's no one-size-fits-all to ensure that the students meet the standards. And again, if there's been a situation where a parent has requested to move for an alternate instruction, that has been individualized, so there is no one approach. So that would be something that we would have to discuss with that family should they make that request. Obviously, we would have to meet the standards, and so whatever we do needs to align to that, just like any other content area when we've made such adjustments.
Thank you. That's, that's all the questions I have. I would like to share just a brief concern, my concern with the timing of this adoption and the ask of approval by the board is based on really the key points that I expressed. I acknowledge and I respect the recommendation by the math committee and our administration, and I'm asking if I can share these concerns with our board and with our community. Math is objective, and I'm having a hard time understanding the need to incur the additional expense of new curriculum when we are making cuts and deficit spending, especially when we are less than a month from adopting a new strategic plan. I have concerns with the expense, the timing of this approval, the further loss of enrollment, and mostly of all, I'm greatly concerned with meeting the academic needs of all learners. Our community deserves a decision that brings unity to our district versus further division. I'm asking we go back to the drawing board after the approval of the strategic plan and provide a solution that unites our community. We are Lakers, and we deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the presentation and then also for your questions, Director Atkinson. You asked some of the same questions I was planning on asking with respect to what all is included within the quote. So seeing that it's seven years and it's pretty much fully loaded, that definitely helps. What is the cost of our current curriculum? Because I'm curious of what's the delta between our current curriculum, Curriculum A, and our CPM math curriculum?
So the maintenance of our current curriculum would have minimal of any costs. But what I would offer to that is each year, our budget is based upon the multi-year needs that we have. So for example, covering the cost this year or for next year for math, obviously takes care of math into the foreseeable future, allowing our resources, very limited resources within the curriculum budgets, to be utilized for other adoptions that are necessary for other content areas, either due to standards changing or information such as the READ Act coming out of the legislature for our ELA adoption, needing to go somewhat back to the drawing board with regard to that. So the, that is typically how the curriculum budget is spent, focused on a particular area or possibly multiple areas each year, and to extend that out to a period of time so that we have monies each year to spend according to the particular needs of that year. So does that help to answer that question?
Yes, yes. In a roundabout way, it does. Thank you. And we've heard quite a bit from community, we've heard multiple times from students that they're concerned about the programming. We all know that it does take time to implement and adopt a new curriculum or even stand up something new. We saw that with Laola del Lago as that, as our Spanish immersion program continued to develop year over year with that initial cohort of kindergarteners became that pilot group year after year after year, and all of the different challenges and hardships that we have experienced over that time. We also are very familiar, Spanish immersion as well as math, that it's going to take some time to adjust to the new curriculum and that it's not going to be fast, we're going to see some continual dips in performance, but then it should level itself out. Is that also what I'm to understand here with the CPM math, that we'll expect to see some level of attrition before we see ongoing development?
Yeah, I think last week when we spoke about the implementation dip of any, that applies to any new work that's being done, that is what that body of research is all about. And as we learn a new system, as we learn new strategies, new approaches, a new curriculum to better meet the needs of our student, as we learn how to adapt that, that process does take some time. And we also have students that are at different entry points into that and will be needing to take that into consideration as well. Students that, for example, will come into sixth grade next year pending approval of this, that have had one year of the Bridges curriculum, making sure that there is familiarity with the standards and where the gaps might be. Likewise, our seventh graders next year who are coming from not having that experience in a CPM pilot, coming into our seventh grade, and where are the gaps that we will need to make sure to address? And so each year, those gaps will become more widely known, and we'll be able to make adjustments accordingly to better meet the needs of our students.
Thank you. I don't have any other.
Go ahead. Thank you. I think if I were to have a, one question would be, what would it look like? I think, you know, with Director Atkinson's question regarding the standards implementation when, when those were due, and you sharing the 2627 school year, my question would be, what would it look like for our district to continue on with this pilot? What would it look like? We've heard several requests for postponing the vote until the strategic plan was complete. What, what would that look like for us?
A couple of challenges that I'll point out that that would create, and one of which is that this year, we had just a handful of teachers who received that extensive training, who have that experience implementing at the middle school level, four specifically. Those teachers would certainly, I don't want to speak for them, but I, it's my understanding based upon numerous conversations with them, that they would want to continue moving forward in the manner in which they have, rather than return to their former teaching practices prior to this pilot training and implementation. So we would then want to expand, I would suspect, because part of the challenges that we have had this year is when you do a pilot and you have students that are in one group of pilot classroom comparatively with students who are not, that presents some challenges. And I would channel my inner Mr. Kabushak here as a principal at Twin Oaks Middle School, who has spoken with families in situations where there are pilot students and non-pilot students within the same grade level. That presents some challenges for students and families both in and out of those classrooms. And so we would have to be seriously considering whether or not we would desire to choose to continue to have that be the case, where we had at certain grade levels, not all of our teachers engaged in the same curriculum. They all have the same responsibility of standards, and collectively as a learning team is how we're typically structured, the teachers at a particular grade level with a particular content area, working collaboratively to ensure that the experience does address the standards, would present a challenge. The other piece that is certainly on the horizon for us as a team that supports is later this evening in the study session, we'll be talking about the READ Act and the efforts that will be needed from our professional development resources internally to support our teachers at a K-5 level and phase one of that, is a strain on our other resources and the ability to support in other content areas at other grade levels. So those are a couple of the challenges, or a few of the challenges that I would put, and Dr. Thomas, I think, has a couple.
Yeah, if I just, Chair Franz, if I may just add just two more things. The other is that I am not aware of a curriculum publisher that lets you continually pilot infinitely. It's like taking a car for a test drive for, you know, a thousand test drives. At some point, the dealership makes you buy it. And so our ability to continue a pilot is probably not likely with any publisher that I've ever worked with. I would also just say that, you know, with regards to the feedback around the strategic plan, you know, all the strategic planning sessions that we've had with our community, feedback sessions, as well as the core planning team sessions, and where we're landing even with some of our language, the, the language of the strategic plan will hold any type of math curriculum. It's, it's, it's not written for a specific curriculum, and it's agnostic. It's supposed to be large enough that it can hold a variety of changes and withstand the test of time. Learner profiles change, research changes, curriculum changes. We're not doing these changes in the strat plan every single year or every single time a content area might change. So, so again, I'm not concerned with our strategic plan being written in such a manner that it would not support CPM or any other curriculum that we have currently and/or what we will adopt with the READ Act. There's going to be some changes that we're going to have to address with that. The plan's not done for that either. So again, I'm not concerned about the language there that we've been hearing from our community that would capture that concept.
I don't have any other questions. I just want to say that I appreciate all of the engagement, and it's all been taken, you know, listened to thoughtfully, the concerns, the support, the students, all of it. I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Oh, my turn. I, like Director Atkinson, was quite surprised at the response. As we started into this process of curriculum discussion for math, I know that we've been talking about a new math curriculum for quite a few years. We didn't just stumble upon this. Could you let me know again how many? Looked at quite a few? And then remind me again that this aligned with the Bridges curriculum that we have implemented at elementary, correct?
Yes, that is correct. When we began looking at curriculum, well, actually before, when we first engaged in these conversations, again, I mentioned K-12 over three years ago, we were looking at the new upcoming standards. We were utilizing those as a model to look at, as we were considering both our vision across the system, K-12, as well as then considering the pilot resources that we utilized last year at the elementary level. Then we took action on that in April. Shortly thereafter, we came together with our middle school teachers to look at a variety of curriculum resources, five of them specifically, and shared the details on that last week. And the one we landed on specifically to pilot was CPM, and there were a number of reasons, but one of the strongest reasons was its alignment to the practices that we were looking at and aligning with the curriculum that was chosen at the elementary level to implement those instructional practices.
Okay. And then we're, and I know you don't have a definite answer, but there's a possibility that this wouldn't carry over to the, like, is the high school even looking at it? And I know it's kind of putting the cart before the horse, but...
We are engaging with our high school staff around looking at resources that they believe will meet their needs at, at the high school level, knowing the direction that has, will be coming to them, and have been engaged in that conversation with the middle school. Last year began looking at some resources also, and are beginning to identify those resources that we want to look more deeply at as we move forward, but we do not have any particular resources at this time that we are considering at the high school level. There are, one, one thing that's, that's different at the high school level, and this might be, might be behind your question, and I don't want to make assumptions, but as we get into the high school level, as you know, the types of courses, the range of courses that we prepare our students for or have to have curriculum for is much more diverse. We have them all in the same curriculum as we come through the elementary and into the middle school, but it's not, hasn't been uncommon, and presumably moving forward won't be uncommon, that there are different curricular resources out depending on the course. The range of courses deepens greatly as they move through the high school. So definitely would anticipate that there would be that continued variation. So for example, a statistics course, a pre-calculus course, a calculus course would potentially have different vendors that we would be considering depending on the needs of that course.
That's what I was getting at. Because we, I've talked a little bit with you about this in the past, about the difference between curriculum and instructional practice. And for me, I think that, that teacher efficacy is important for, I know that it might not be the most popular among students to have a curriculum that's perceived more difficult, but like Director Velazquez said, sometimes things get harder before they get better. So, and my final question, or maybe you can just let me know if my research was right. I know that we try not to compare ourselves to other communities, but it's just what people do, right? We just always have to know who's doing what. In my research, I was able to find that Wayzata uses this curriculum, and Nocahennepin and Osseo, and that is quite a few districts that are pretty large in our state. Have you had any experience with those districts or...
Yeah, and they are, just for clarification, they are using the CPM version previous to the one that we're piloting, but aligned with the, as we shared in the board presentation last week, there are some, the Inspiring Connections Curriculum is a continuation of the existing CPM curriculum, another addition that has a few components, if you recall, we shared in the presentation, enhancements, I guess, that are aligned with the standards. But yes, those are districts, large districts, that are utilizing this at the secondary level.
If I may, Chair Franz, just to quickly add and extend a little bit of what Dr. Edwards is saying is that, you know, I liken this to when you get a software update on your phone. So the core math components are the same within CPM. There are the enhancements that Dr. Edwards mentioned that are now more aligning to the projected standards, which actually I think fall '27, '28 school year. But, but it's MDE, so who knows? We rolled the dice a little bit. But I will say that it's not a, it's not fundamentally a completely new curriculum. It is, it is similar to when Mac or IBM pushes out their updates on their core platform. So that's what we're looking at, but the core mathematical components are the same.
Director Velazquez?
Thank you. Um...
Thank you. I want to thank my fellow board members for all their questions and inquiry. I don't, I don't have any at this time. I've listened to a lot of presentations. I've been to the Teaching and Learning Committee, read a lot of stuff, and I want to say thanks to the staff who have taken a lot of their personal time to work on this and be able to speak to it with fidelity to us to make our decision-making easier. You could easily just say, yep, I like it, I approve it, I got to go home, you know? And you're not doing that. We're seeing you at meetings, we're seeing you at Teaching and Learning Committee. Really try and walk through the community with it, and that carries a lot of weight in my decision-making. I also find the collective educator recommendation to be really powerful, and I think our staff can identify and understand our students' needs the best, and they're with them every day trying to learn the material, and nobody is more motivated to try and improve the scores, the scores, okay, that's a byproduct of it all, but the academic experience of these kids. And the student learning and experience are at the forefront of what you do every day, and I fully and wholeheartedly respect that. So I just really wanted to take the moment to give my heartfelt thanks to you for your time and efforts in this and bringing it forward.
I wanted to start by thanking the students that not only are in this room, but at school every day. It's not easy to get up and speak to a school board. I understand that, and I thank you for doing that. And a little plug, come more often, we like to see you.
Yeah.
We really do. You're the reason that we're in these chairs. To the teachers for piloting and who didn't pilot either, thank you for your work. You volunteer for this. This isn't something you're told to do, you volunteer to do it. And it's a lot of work, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate that as a parent with a student in the pilot right now. And I know her friends as well. And I've, I've heard from a lot of families and community members and had those discussions, good, bad, ugly. It's appreciated, it's valued, and it, I think I can safely speak for all of us up here that we are not dismissing any of it. All perspectives are welcome, and I appreciate it. I think this particular curriculum inspires a lot of confidence, again, and I don't want to sound trite in that, because I know it's a lot of work on all ends for everybody to get through this and to pilot something. But I think from what I have seen in the shadows that I've done, it really does inspire a lot of confidence. Are you sure about that answer? And, and watching these, watching the kids' face light up when they do things different ways and still get to the same answer, and it's the correct answer, and it's, and it's a really cool experience to, to witness. So I really appreciate that. I wanted to address a couple of misconceptions that I think, and please help me here, administration and other board members. The money for this does not come out of teacher salaries. I want to make that very clear, that if this comes out of fund balance, if, if approved, fund balance, we don't pay for teacher salaries out of fund balance. That would be irresponsible of us. Fund balance is a one-time thing. This $370,000 is a one-time cost, a seven-year cost. So I want to make that very clear, because there's been some people talk to me about, I don't want you to take money from teachers. I don't want to take money from teachers either. So I just wanted to, and correct me if I'm wrong there, but I hope I'm stating that correctly. And I did hear something about, we don't want our students to be guinea pigs. I don't want our students to be guinea pigs either. But I'm not going to sit here and, and go through a pilot without getting student feedback on a pilot. We have to engage our students in any pilot we do, whether it's math, English, science, social studies, whatever we do. I personally hate that term because of its negative connotation, and I would never, ever, ever use our students as guinea pigs for anything else. And I think I can safely speak for anybody else that they would feel the same way. So no curriculum is perfect, and again, I also don't mean that as a trite statement because it's very vague, but I think there is promise in this curriculum. And the one question I had, and thank you Director Atkinson for bringing this up, because I did get this question too, is about the opt-out situation. This is not a loaded question, I promise you. What is the alternative? So if a family by policy comes in and says, I want to opt out of this math class, where do they go? What, do they just not do, I mean, they can't just not do math. So that, I, I promise this isn't a loaded question, but I don't know what that next step would be.
So we do, as Dr. Thomas shared earlier in response to this question, we do from time to time have certain elements of a curriculum or of a course that parents desire to have alternative assignments associated with. And that is worked with the teacher first and foremost. If it's more comprehensive than that and/or even initially might include working with building administration to identify, but at the end of the day, we have an obligation around the standards and to meet the standards associated with a particular course or sequence of courses. So we would have to work with the individual student and family to identify what, how we would go about doing that. And that is not something that we would yet have the answer to, but it certainly is something that we will have to prepare for as we begin familiarizing our larger staff, assuming approval here, our entire staff with the curriculum to identify what would be alternatives should that be desired. We would also, that, that is another area that we'll need to also develop is parental supportive materials. That's one of the areas of feedback that we received. So I would put that in a similar category that we will have to investigate and look into and figure out how to solve that problem when that is presented to us. Sure. Dr. Thomas, if you'd have anything to add?
I think you've covered it, Dr. Edwards. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone for their input and their questions, for the entire community for coming out multiple times to speak. I have one question, and then I just have a couple of comments. And that question is, our current math curriculum does not meet the new MDE standards. Is that a correct statement?
That would be a correct statement, yep.
The sooner we do move to something that does, even though there's still a learning curve, the more prepared the students will be therefore for when the new curriculum comes in in a couple of years, when it actually starts to be tested via new standards, via the MCAs, is...
That, that would be correct, yep. We would be supplementing to meet those standards, will be supplementing regardless of curriculum, but this curriculum would be, we believe, less supplementing.
And the cost of supplementation of our current curriculum would be fairly manual and almost as costly, from what I understand from my questions before?
Yes.
Okay. And this also plays well, as I've seen by visiting classrooms with the Bridges curriculum, that is, it's very similar to the group work, it's very similar to the, to the type of learning and the, the question learning and the why learning that's actually incurring in Bridges. Is that a correct statement? So the elementary students that are coming out of Bridges, going into the middle school then, will have that natural continuum and therefore not this, almost like a staccato-like, we did it one way one year, another way another year.
Yes, that would be part of the recommendation here, to stabilize that.
Right. So after sitting in classes and reading the research, seeing the numbers, I trust our teachers. They are very excited about this. We have 100% buy-in by them to choose this. They're excited about it, this is their job, this is what they do every day, and what I heard from other board members, I, in total concurrence with that. And so I have no further, no further questions. Dan, go ahead.
I have more of a comment. I'm not terribly familiar with this new curriculum. Not terribly familiar with this new curriculum, but my first impression being, oh, thank you. My first impression being a group of students coming up and expressing their alarm, I find quite disconcerting, because I remember from my time in middle school, there was never, there were a couple of things I didn't necessarily like, but never something that rallied such support and unity, that they had over 160 people fill out a form where the majority were against it. I find that, I, I really respect teachers immensely, just because they've done so much for me over the years, and I don't mean to disrespect them, but seeing such support against the program from students, I think, really warrants more feedback and looking at options before we approve this, just because that's, that's, to me, just really something important that can't be overlooked. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote? Okay. This is a real call, vote again. So I will start with Jessica, Director Olstad?
Yes.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Velazquez? Director Atkinson?
Nay.
And aye, so that passes 6-1. And on to Laker Pride.
Thank you, Chair Franz, board directors. This evening, we have a very special individual we'd like to recognize. We are going to, last week, but due to scheduling conflict, was not able to be here with us, but we've got our student rep, Dan Bergen, with us tonight. And I've got two certificates I would like to present to him. The first is one that we present from the Prior Lake School Board as being a student rep, and it states that this certificate of appreciation is given in recognition of your valuable contributions to Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. You are a true ambassador of Laker Pride. That comes from the district. And the second one I would like to share, and I'm actually going to just read this real brief letter from the Minnesota School Boards Association. Dear Dan, or says, student school board member. But we want to thank you for applying, actually, wait, hold on one second. Okay. We want to thank you for, we want to thank you for applying for our board scholarship, very competitive, that they did award that scholarship with someone else, but they also provide a certificate for their appreciation of your service and support here in our district. And I want to read from the school board, Minnesota School Boards Service Awards, Minnesota School Boards Association Service Award. This is a recognition that we proudly award Daniel William Bergen, who has been proudly serving the student, Prior Lake High School, Prior Lake Schools, as a Prior Lake High School student and student school board member. We want to thank you for your year of service with us, and I will just share a couple of words on my own, and I think you just exemplified it just a minute ago. You are part of our strategic planning core team, and I have been beyond impressed with the leadership that you display in that group. You are one of four or so students that are part of that group and are not afraid to lean in with your voice when we are going through really some tough conversations, differing ideals, and, and just like you shared tonight amongst the board and the community, you're wanting to give your perspective, not only from your own lived experience, but also that of your peers, because you're here to support their perspectives as well. So I just want to thank you for being courageous in your leadership, and we also want to wish you well as you journey off to St. Olaf next year. And we expect to hear great things about you and what you do in college and ultimately what you're going to do for this community and beyond. So congratulations to you, and thank you so much for your year of service here with the board. And I'll turn it to you for any comments from the board.
I just want to say that it has been a pleasure. Your participation this year has been overwhelmingly positive and very, very strong, and we appreciate that. I understand that your leadership on the student council has been equally so, and your advocacy for the students in the school and in your grade and for your own council has been overwhelmingly positive and a great leadership experience. So thank you very, very much for your time. And for those of you who don't know, we were supposed to give Mr. Bergen his award last time, and he has actually, he doesn't even need to show up tonight, but he wanted to show up tonight. So that was quite a positive thing, and I believe you've asked to show up even after you graduate, which is not required at all.
We'll take you.
But, yeah, we, it's, it's actually an honor to have you part of this board, so thank you. Thank you for all that. Anybody else?
Thanks for speaking up. Oh, I'm sorry, Amy.
No, you go ahead, go ahead.
Thanks for speaking up. I mean, just, thanks for speaking up. You're, you're why we're here, and, you know, I, you're not afraid to ask questions, you're not afraid to, to speak up, and that's a lot, and not everybody can, can do that, and that's okay. But I just, I'm really impressed with you, Dan, and I, I wish you the best, the absolute best, and good luck to you.
Well, Lisa, did you want, Director Atkinson, did you want to say something?
Oh, thank you. I wasn't exactly sure how to chime in. I wanted to just wait till everybody else had their time. Dan, you have been a breath of fresh air. I appreciate your engagement on this board. I remember your comments around advanced math, and your perspective is, is greatly appreciated. And I will just say, I'm not sure who's going to be able to fill those shoes, because you have added just a whole different level as far as how you represent the students in our district. So thank you. It's, it's a pleasure knowing you and working with you, and I wish you the best in your future. You have a bright future, by the way. I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I, I could just echo everything that everyone has said, Dan. It has been a pleasure having you on this board. It's been a pleasure having you part of the core strategic planning meetings, getting to know you. Yeah, I don't need, I don't need to repeat everything that everyone said, but I, it has been a pleasure. It has been a pleasure. Just appreciate you, wishing you the best, and I concur, you have a bright future ahead of you, sir.
I'll say, I appreciate having you as a table mate. It's been outstanding to share, to engage, to talk during the session, after the session, in between. Yeah, just very open, illuminating, illuminating, engaging experience, and your Stetson game is top-notch. Without a doubt. So I appreciate you willingly coming and showing up just as your true self. Not many other students would do that, and I appreciate you so much for that. Thank you. Best of luck at St. Olaf in political science. Yes, sir.
Picture, photo out. Somebody has to take your phone.
Oh, gosh.
Sorry. Very good. Yeah, thank you.
Sharing them with us.
Yeah. Okay, so the next...
Yeah, thank you.
Sharing them with us.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next order of business is actually to adjourn, and this will be our last roll call vote. So I need a motion by Director Bullion and second by Director Olstad. And roll call vote, Director Atkinson?
Aye.
Director Velazquez?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Okay, that, an aye, that passes seven-zero for adjourn, and we're going to adjourn and transition to a study session, and in the meantime, why don't we take a few minutes break about, yes?
And then Chair Franz, I apologize, I do have to leave the meeting at this point, so thank you.
Okay. So we'll come back in about five minutes, if that's okay, so people can take a break. Thank you.
Thanks.